Welcome to our work session special meeting. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have just a couple of actionable items here before I turn it over to Dr. Morrow. We have some employees entering the district, part-time temporary substitute teachers, substitute aides, after-school training programs. I don't think I need to read everybody's names. If anybody wants the names, they can ask us for them. Is there...I do have one question though. On the after-school training program, is it open to district employees first? And then the others on this list that I know are not, that are just like, not just better subs?
Yes. It's open to district employees and anybody who coaches for us first.
Okay.
And we filled in with, if we needed more people, with anybody else that was interested. We pretty much were able to take everybody that expressed an interest in doing it.
Oh, good. Good. I think that's important.
Yeah, because they're not all working every week, so.
Okay. And the trainer, is she getting paid the same as the others?
Same rate, yes.
Okay, she's not getting paid.
Same rate.
Is there a motion to accept?
A move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have a contract for perfect placement, which makes me laugh about the spelling since it's a virtual college recruiting seminar. I looked that up to make sure that...they weren't really very smart using that name. And it's a one-day thing? Patty, ready?
Yes.
Is it for the students or is it for the staff?
It's for the students and parents.
Oh, okay. Okay. Is there a motion to accept that contract?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And at this point, I will turn this over to Dr. Morrow for his presentation this evening. Should we move over to there?
You guys have a copy of everything I'm going to show in that packet just here.
So if I move way over here, I can be in the way.
And much of this, I believe I've sent you, so. So, as things continue to progress in New York State, we were given an edict that we had to update our district-wide safety plan. Every district has a district-wide safety plan. You guys saw ours over the summer. It's been posted on our website since we put it into the portal. And the state decided that the district-wide safety plans should include a lot more information than they do now. Most of this related to COVID. So, we met and, you know, we went through their timelines are very tight. They wanted it in 30 days. They won't have it in 30 days because we have to post it on our website for 30 days, then have it finalized at the next board meeting. And, you know, and then we'll go through the process of posting it. I have emailed them already and told them that, and they said, "Thank you for the communication." But, you know, if you go through that one, I put that one page on here, so it's very tight, but you guys have this in writing. It's the, you know, it says district-wide safety plan amendments, October 2020. No, this came from Department...I'm sorry. This came from SED, right, Patty? Yeah. Yeah, this came from the SED. Yeah. The school, the district-wide safety plan is through SED, and it has to go in the SED business portal. 30 days for open comment. Then we input it. There's never been, you know, I've gotten letters, I've gotten emails telling me I don't have it in there because they wanted it in already, but they don't really approve. They just, they just acknowledge that it's there, you know. So, this one had us do multiple things. It had us identify who are essential personnel, because the blanket order that allowed, you know, the chief school officer to identify who was essential is no longer in place. So they would like to know who is essential. And, you know, we went through all the people in district, and there are some of these people that would be essential to be in a day a week or two days a week. Some would be essential to be in every day. You know, so, we went through anybody that might have to be in at any time throughout a shutdown, and we identified them. Then they, you know, the second thing they charged us with is, we had to give everybody the ability to communicate through their phones and the systems that we have in school from an alternate location for an extended period of time. So, we contacted Mitel. Mitel does have an application, because we have an IP phone system in district where your phone can come up on your Chromebook or your computer. I used it last year through a different company. You know, it's, it's not as nice as talking on the phone in your office, but it does work well, and it allows us to answer messages and respond to people. And, you know, one of their major problems last year when they shut everything down was, people were calling schools and there was no one there. The weeks that we were shut down, I answered phone calls daily. Unfortunately, you know, I don't speak Spanish. There were numerous people. I had to get their name and phone number, and then email, you know, our aide or interpreter, and then they would call them back. Other people, I was able to answer their questions or get them answers, but, you know, it just happens to be the main switchboard comes in through my office, which made me allowed, able to do that. But if they were calling direct to a school, I wasn't getting them, and they were leaving messages. So that was one. Then we had to come up with a plan to make sure that our locations are separated. If we have essential people in the same location, how they can be separated, you know. And then they wanted to go through all of the PPE pieces, how much we had, the return-to-work protocol. Much of this came out of our, our district plan or things that we have already had posted. They just wanted them all in one plan. And then six and seven, they wanted to, they want to make sure that we can track anybody that's here at any time. Many of these things we're doing, you know, we've created, you know, we've created seating charts for our classrooms, which we haven't done in years, but we, we have seating charts in our classrooms, we have logins to our bathrooms, we have sign-ins for where our custodians are working during the day. All of these things have become necessary because our experience, the first go-around, the more you know about all these things, the less people will have to be quarantined if you have a positive case. They want anybody who is, you know, an employee or contractor logged during the quarantine or during a shutdown where they are, so we had, we'll have to create logs for them. And then the last one was emergency housing. If we have people that are on campus and can't go to their homes because they need to quarantine, and, you know, so we had to put that together. So, you know, these will be the additions to the plan. You know, some of them are very general. I don't expect that they'll ever happen, but, you know, if they do, you know, we'll have the means to figure those things out. So, that was the first part. If there's any questions about it, you know, it seems that the hits keep, keep coming, I guess, like my father-in-law used to say. It's, you know, every week something happens, and because this is such a new process for everybody, in the state, in the districts, in the, in the federal government, you know, when something happens, they say, "Hey, you know what? If we had this, we could have dealt with this better. So everybody do this and make sure that's done." And then the next week, you know, it's another thing, and it's really truly evolving. It's a lot of good people that are trying to do the right thing and the best they possibly can, you know, and we're lucky that we have a community and a faculty and a staff that just roll with it and make sure that we get done what we can get done. I can tell you that we have a lot of happy kids in school every day, you know, and that's really the important part. So, that would be the district-wide plan. This one is the Department of Health identified zones. It was sent to us just before the weekend. I did share it. It was actually sent during the week last week. We were told that it would be explained before the weekend. Over the weekend, we did get a memo, which I've shared with you. It's in your packet. It just simply explains what you have to do if you're in this area. So, you know, schools you'll see are on the bottom. They've identified three zones: red zone, orange zone, yellow zone. They have red zones in the city right now, in Brooklyn. You probably saw them on the news today, because there were a couple of private schools that ignored the state's direction and had their kids in school anyway. They've made it eminently clear to us that if we were to ignore an order like this, then it would absolutely impact our funding. That was made clear today. So, if you're a red zone for schools, you're remote. It's that simple. Now, they haven't really identified what a red zone means, but I'm assuming it would be well above the percentage that they say is acceptable for having schools open. The same for orange. So if we're in either of those, if we're identified on this part of the island, and it doesn't necessarily have to do with our school, we may not have one positive case in school, if this area of the island is deemed a red zone or an orange zone, then our schools have to become remote only. We can't have anybody in. We're not, no, we're not, right now, not categorized, which is where you want to be. You know, we're not categorized into any zone, which is where you really want to stay, and it's where you want to be. They have this coloring, they utilized it after the September 11th bombings with threat alerts. And, you know, you guys will probably remember, because I wasn't around here at this time, but I'm sure you were just like everybody else, you probably said, "Hey, look, if there's a red alert in Manhattan, trips can't go in. If there's a yellow, an orange alert, we can't stay overnight. If there's a yellow alert, if there's no alert, we can this." The alert for those, I think, had four, if I remember correctly. One of them was basically where we are now, which is a non-color. So we are, we are not part of this at all right now, because our numbers in this area, similarly to the numbers on Long Island, are hovering around 1%. But if you look at yellow, and again, they have not, they haven't told us exactly what percentage yellow will be. My guess is it's going to be between that 5 and 8%, you know, where they've talked about when they will close schools at, you know, they've talked about closing schools anywhere from 5 to 10%. So I'm guessing that in a lower portion of that, they'll consider it yellow. If we're in a yellow zone, then, then there would have to be mandatory weekly testing of students and teachers, and staff, faculty and staff. The memo that came out that you have does explain that a little bit more. It says that every week that we're in the yellow, we would have to randomly test 20% of our faculty and staff. So that would amount to about 200 people tested a week in Southold. I don't know how we'll do that. I don't know if we can do that. When I, when I spoke, you know, when I spoke with council about requiring testing early on, he was clear that testing employees is perfectly legal, testing students probably is not. Not unless they have some sort of symptoms. Even requiring testing for a student that doesn't have symptoms is probably not permissible. So I think we're going to have to work through those things. We are going to, you know, we're going to do our due diligence and reach out to the health organizations around here, the two different hospitals and the, you know, the City MD, and then also the mobile network that's coming out and doing our antibody testing, and ask about what their availability will be and how they would handle a situation like that. So there's a great deal left to do if it were to come to where we had to test 20% a week if we were in the yellow, and really what that looks like. You know, New York City is actually doing their own testing. You know, they're, they're testing randomly onsite. Students end at, in public schools. The New York City Public Schools are testing onsite, I believe. Nowhere, the only, I reached out, on the list serves, when we had this conversation a while back, and Fisher's Island, I believe, was the only place that said they were testing, but theirs was non-mandatory. It was being done by their island doctor, their local doctor on the island, and it was being offered, and they had below 50% that took advantage of it. But there, you know, they were the only, they were the only suburban district that responded that they were doing testing to me, from the, you know, the 20 or 30 that responded. So, if there's any questions? So, those were the two things I had for tonight. No. It would be up to us if we were not yellow. I'm sorry, if we were not orange or red. If they're still deeming this area, so let's, let's use Brooklyn, where they had the hot spots right now. Those, those areas are red or orange. I don't know which, but they're definitely red or orange because they close all the schools. So they will close them for two weeks now, because that's your typical quarantine period. In two weeks, if their percentage is still above whatever number they're using, that number I don't know, because they haven't shared it, or if they did share it, I missed it in one of the many things that came to me about these. But if they're above that and they're still deemed red or orange, then they will not be able to open school. If they're deemed yellow, they'll be able to open, but they'll have to test 20% a week. If they're not in any of these three identified zones, then they would be able to open and continue in, under whichever model they have in place, if they choose, you know. If they choose, yes. If they're not identified in one of these three zones, then the state does not choose for them. You know, once they're done that 14-day period, that we have to be out. Yes. And the truth is, you know, based on finding out more and more information and looking at what different places are doing all over the island, you know, these things are changing, as are ours. I can tell you that districts all over the island are looking at their models. There's numerous local districts that have a lot less contact with students than we have that are looking to change that. You know, there was an article about Riverhead in the paper that they're figuring out a way to bring their elementary in every day, where they were in every other, and they're trying to cut their cohorts in the high school from three to two, so their kids will be in an extra day a week. Matta Tuck at their board meeting last night talked about bringing in their entire high school, utilizing shields and masks, which would mean they're probably not going to be at the distance that we're at. And it's something that we're looking, you know, we're, we're looking at those schools that are doing those things and monitoring them, because if it's something that's safe, then we would, you know, want to bring it to you and then also bring it to our community and see if people here would feel comfortable sending their kids in those ways. But it's an evolving process. If, you know, if the districts that start doing those things get with some, you know, results that are not positive, you know, then, then people will stay away from it, you know. We are, we are, as a district, and I'll share some of this in the, in the update this week, where, you know, we're looking at trying to figure out what we can do to give our seniors some opportunities, like we're looking to try to bring both cohorts of seniors in on, you know, an afternoon where we can do something outside, like a field day and a barbecue or, you know, it wouldn't be where we'd actually cook. It would be we'd have lunches delivered, so that they're each separate. But, you know, we're all trying to look at ways to do things for our kids, to try to give them some opportunities to feel like typical high school seniors, you know, or typical high school juniors or every other grade. So, you know, as we go, as we go on, schools are trying to figure out ways, a number of people are changing their, their instructional models. The districts that were doing two days in, one, one day everybody out, two days in, so that secondary kids were in two out of the five days, they're looking at eliminating the one day out and making it two and a half in a week, so, you know. So, it's kind of evolving. We sent out surveys to everybody last week. There's a lot of really good information. They close on Friday. We will sit down and go through and synthesize all that information and look where we can try to support people or see what things we can possibly do different. Yeah. Yep. They'll close on Friday, so the following week I'll share everything with you. Yeah, we figured out how to, we figured out a way, we talked with the kids, and our advisors met with the kids, and they're going to break the play down into scenes, so they're going to have no more than eight or nine people here at a time. And then they're going to, they're going to either record it or broadcast it. So, so there won't be a live audience, but the play will be live, but it'll be done in bits and pieces. We will, we will be utilizing volunteers, again, broken into small pieces to come in and build sets, like we've done in the past with kids. Socially distanced, masked, you know. We went through a lot of it today. There's still some planning, but our kids are interested in doing it. They believe this will give them an opportunity to engage in something that was similar to what they did in the past and something they want to do. You know, it's something that we believe that is not going to be different than what we're doing in a classroom, so it will be safe and we can do the numbers, yeah. Yeah, it may impact it. And the truth is, there's a lot of things that are impacting it. And then we're looking at creative ways, you know, there are a lot of things that are impacting it adversely, but there are also things that are impacting it where we're not utilizing funds. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so, you know, so, we're looking at some creative ways to try to, you know, keep everything balanced and still provide opportunities, but it's definitely different, and in some ways it's more expensive and in other ways it's less. You know, but we're, we're, we're looking at as many creative ways, and like I said, we have a lot of very creative teachers and we have a lot of very creative administrators, and we have a lot of very creative students that are coming up together with these different ideas. They're not the same as they were, but they're, they're similar, or they're, or they're different, but they're still really good opportunities for them. Well, I mean, the gathering number is 50 in Suffolk County. 50 for any gathering in Suffolk County. I would check with the, you know, I would, we would have to check and look and see what we'd be allowed. I don't, I'm not positive, and it's, it's not something, it's not something I've looked into, so I don't have an answer for it, but I can, I can certainly look, and I'll talk with Mr. Rush, and, you know, we'll, you know, we'll see what his, that group is comfortable with and what their families are comfortable with. Yeah, outside, you know. We use the amphitheater for our after-school program daily. You know, one of the stations to let the kids rest a little bit is, I don't remember exactly what they call, but they talk to them about the mental part of competing and the mental part of learning how to train and, you know, they, we have, you know, a couple of coaches that, and they sit the kids spaced out and they sit in the amphitheater and, you know, they talk with them about, you know, pushing through, you know, pushing through things when you're, when you're working hard and competing and that mental side of competition, you know. So certainly it's a great place for us to look at using. So I'll talk with them about those things tomorrow and see, you know, we're constantly trying to come up with opportunities, you know, to, to give them a chance to be students, you know, just the way we have been. Yep. So we'll, we'll certainly take a look at that. If we have any other questions or anything you want? It's my first work session, so. Our work sessions in prior districts really looked just like our other board meetings, so, you know, I think it's a great opportunity for us to talk about things and look at different things and, you know, get an idea on how we want to do them. So, yeah. What's it called? The extracurricular program? Or I can't remember what we called it.
After-school student training program.
Yeah. Yes. No, what we, well, I mean, there are, there is a day here and there where certain people can't be there because they had commitments or something like that. But typically what we did is, we assigned coaches based on the sports, so like our fall coaches were all signed last week, because the sports-specific piece for the last 45 minutes was based on fall sports. This, this week, it's our winter coaches. Now, because of the fact that we're breaking our kids into smaller groups, we have other, we have some fall coaches that'll work this week also, because we didn't have enough winter coaches. We had some winter coaches that worked, or spring coaches that worked in both weeks. So they'll, they'll be with the same coach for their sports-specific piece, and then they'll be with the same specialist. So we have a specialist for endurance. We have a specialist for the mental, you know, the, you know, the self-minded part of, of sports. And then we have one for agility and one for speed. So they're with the same person, and then when they do their sports-specific, they're with the same people too. Yeah. So it works out that they're with their coaches. But it also works out that, like we've told kids, and it's interesting, because some of them said, "Oh, really? I can do that?" If you don't play a winter sport, come anyway. You know, you get to do the first hour and 40, hour and 15, hour and 20 minutes of speed, agility, strength, and mental training, and then you get to go do some sports-specific stuff for whatever sport you want. You know, go and, go and try basketball one day, then go and try, you know, a different one the next day, and so on and so forth. So, you know, we're hoping it gives our kids different opportunities. We're also hoping it makes them, you know, bigger, faster, and stronger, because the strength, the speed, and the agility part is really good for any students, especially those that have been sitting around for months. You know, I was out there the first day, and we had a couple of very athletic kids. One young lady, and the endurance piece they were doing was, they were jogging the turns and sprinting the straightaways on the track, and they were doing four legs of that, so a mile. So you would jog the turn, then you'd sprint the 120 on the, on the straightaway, then you'd jog the turn, then you'd sprint the 120, then you'd jog the turn, and, and she was very athletic and clearly very fast, and I, I said, I said to her afterwards, "You know, you look good. When was the last time you ran?" And she said, "Way too long ago," you know, and, you know, it, it felt good, she said. It felt great, you know, to run, and, and even some of the kids, I, yeah, excuse me. It's a beautiful track. It's, it's a beautiful track. It allows us to space our kids out. They can take their masks off when they're doing their endurance training, because they're not near anybody else, you know. So, you know, they get to have a little bit of fun. They play Simon Says when they're stretching, and they, you know, they laugh, and we do it by cohort, so you get two days a week each, you know, and, and it's nice. It's nice to see them out there, and it's nice to see the coaches out there with them, and, yeah, yeah. And we have a lot of kids out there, even though they're split, we really have a lot of kids out there every day. So it's good to see, and it's, yeah, yep. Yeah, so it's working out very well. It's funny, because we have some kids that have come on their non-cohort day, and you see them running sprints all the way down the forward baseball field, you know, so, and we don't, you know, we don't chase them, we let them go run. Yeah, if we have weather like that, we don't have any indoor space that we could really use with that many kids without, without creating... really use with that many kids without, without creating a scenario where if somebody tested positive, we'd have half our school out. Yeah, so it's really not possible. We only use, we only use the indoor space for one group a day if we absolutely have to. So if the grass is really wet like it was the first day, the one group that would have been sitting and stretching or, you know, doing push-ups or crawling, we, we worked them just inside the gym doors with all the gym doors open, but we're trying to do it outside as much as possible to mitigate any problems we could have. So, all right? You're very welcome.
Motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor?